She's with the city government.
So that money will...
It already, we received it October, I think it was October 4th. October 4th, we received that money.
So essentially, the operations continue?
Yes, yeah, we always, and we always have our, our money in reserve. So our cash, our cash is up there. We could sustain six months without subsidy coming in if we needed to.
Thank you. No further questions.
Any other questions? Okay, what, that's it. This is just a presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners.
Madam Chair, the next item on the agenda is the Housing Director's monthly report. Under unit maintenance, the Housing Authority will be requesting Commission approval at this meeting for Resolution 1741, City of Las Vegas Housing Authority's Maintenance Program, including preventative maintenance procedures, October 2017, as well as Resolution 1742, City of Las Vegas Housing Authority Transfer Policy, October 2017, in both English and Spanish, which provides guidance to PHAs on the requirements of the Violence Against Women's Act. Our maintenance crew is continually working on unit turnaround from move-out inspection to move-in inspection with a short period of time. They have also mowed the lawns and weeds in all of our units. And I'm happy to report that we've had a lot of compliments on how our cleanup efforts have improved not only the beauty of the area, but also the morale of the tenants themselves. We have also had help from Public Works, and I'd like to thank them publicly. They recently mowed the Macario Gonzalez site, and they also lent us four laborers during the days that it was raining. So we were able to use them to turn around. We're working on four units. We were able to turn around three units a lot faster and get them housed a lot faster. We have created a spreadsheet to log the date, time, hours, salary, et cetera, for in-kind from the City of Las Vegas to the Housing Authority. And we'll continually send that to HUD for their approval. And I thank Natasha for putting that spreadsheet together. Also, we have received an email from our HR Risk Office, who has been working diligently with Adam Aldaz from the Self-Nured Fund and the team of adjusters. Mr. Aldaz has received the authorization from the upper management to proceed with signing off on the authorization to bring on Archileta Restoration as the general contractor for the emergency repairs for the hail damage to our units. Because the job is going to be so large, Archileta will need to subcontract out to several contractors. Archileta will be the sole responsible party to subbing out to local contractors. Our Risk Officer has submitted a list of local contractors to Mr. Archileta, and they will subcontract out to the qualifying contractors. Under Housing Management, housing managers are continually busy with the day-to-day operations of the Housing Authority, including new admissions, annual lease renewals, annual inspections of units, and lease enforcements. Under Staff Training, staff training has been attending the monthly safety training provided by our city. As required by HUD, I have continued to attend various web seminars and also training physically in Albuquerque, as well as teleconferences. At our last meeting, I created a binder for each of the Commissioners to help with training in public housing governance and financial management. I urge each of you to, if you have not already logged on, I urge each of you to log on due to the fact that HUD can check to see who is and who is not logging on and being properly trained. Under Compliance Monitoring Notification, HUD has completed their compliance review, as Natasha has reported, and they have told us that they will be sending us a report by the end of this month. I look forward to that report, and I will be using that as a guide onto what deficiencies we have and how to correct those deficiencies. As Natasha mentioned earlier, we did receive on October 4th an email from HUD stating that we were on 100% review threshold, and we have begun sending the necessary documents over to HUD, and we are in direct and constant contact with them. In moving the Housing Authority forward and to remain proactive, I've decided, to be proactive, I've decided in the following, prior to the review, prior to the compliance review report being released to the governing body, I will proceed with other forms of training in the near future as well, as well as getting and looking closer to HUD's training for themselves with the governing body as a body, as a group. They've also suggested that we rent possibly a hotel space, and they would be more than happy to come and would be like a half-day to a day training. I'm looking, currently looking into that right now. I proceeded to bring outdated policies for the governing body's approval. At the compliance review, Ms. Grego asked for our finance binder, which was not on-site. She informed us that it should always be on-site. She asked that we copy the city's financial binder, and I've done so. There were actually, due to the volume of paperwork, there were actually three binders now, not just one binder. Also, at the compliance review, Ms. Grego asked for our policy binder, which I provided, however, found out that the policies were very outdated. As stated earlier in our last meeting, I'm in the process of updating all of the required policies for our department, and I will also be sending those to HUD. Lastly, the Finance Department and I have currently been working on the Housing Authority's accounting policy, which is in draft form today. I plan on bringing it to you for approval during November's meeting if it meets the approval of all the parties prior. And I believe that is it for my report. Madam Chair.
Okay. Questions, comments? I have a few questions. Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
On the preventive maintenance procedures, is this part of the actual recommendation?
No, it wasn't. What it is, was an old policy, one of the old policies that I had stated in a previous meeting, that I would like to start to bring old policies forward and have them updated. The last time this policy was updated was in 2012.
Okay.
And I would like to have it in more up-to-date language in 2017.
Now, on the operating policies, are those the, how far along is working on those required by HUD?
On the accounting policy?
Uh huh. And are you working with our Finance Director?
Yes, ma'am.
Good.
The Finance Director and I are very closely, we're working very closely, almost word for word, together on this. And I believe we should have this complete by our next meeting.
Okay. And is she also continuing to provide some technical assistance and training to Natasha?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Ortiz, thank you very much. Let's continue.
The next item on the agenda, Madam Chair, is business item number one, approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 17-42 to rescind and replace the previous City of Las Vegas Housing Authority's Transfer Policy and submit all documents necessary for the approval of the October 2017 City of Las Vegas Transfer Policy, in both English and in Spanish.
Okay. Questions, comments? Ms. Ortiz.
Thank you. The, if I, if I remember correctly, and from reading past minutes, the implementation notice was issued in May, and I think that the Violence Against Women's Act changes were first talked about in February or March around there sometime. Were those changes all covered in this policy that we're looking at today?
Yes, ma'am, they were all covered in. And we actually worked together, Natasha worked very closely on this policy, and made sure that they would comply with HUD's regulations as well.
And there were some forms attached to the policy. Who can fill out those forms? Anybody, or does Natasha can answer?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, to jump back to your first question, the February notice was actually about our mixed families. So in housing, we have what are called mixed families. So we have some that their immigration status is alien, and, but they have also children in the home who are born in the USA. They're DACA or implant. And so, the Violence Against Women's, that notice that came out in February, or no?
Citizens.
Oh, citizens, sorry. Yes, citizens. And so, the way that the notice was put out was just regarding our mixed family households, the ones that have two residents and two that are non-citizens, or the way that it did read, it did read it again, but I guess there's not so much political correctness to that. But in this policy, this one is just basically on the Violence Against Women's Act for our current tenants, that it doesn't touch the mixed family stuff, but it's just to go further on that. If that makes sense? Does that answer your question?
Okay. Yeah. And when a tenant is transferred, and the tenant requests a transfer, what kind of accommodations can be made for that tenant that is requesting the transfer?
Because it's going to be, it's a fair housing transfer. So any sort of accommodation, such as if they were behind on their rent, because, you know, their violator was beating them up. According to the fair housing, the way that they wrote it out, I think we have to make like some sort of payment arrangements when we transfer them. That's the way I understood it. And then as far as accommodations, you know, if you're, will issue like a no trespass on the person that's doing the attacking, that type of accommodations can be made towards the tenants themselves.
Okay. And my last question is the question in the comment. The Spanish version, I think, is very nicely done. I read all of it, and it's great. And my question, you just mentioned that there are some tenants that might speak other languages. What do we do about those people? Do we have somebody that can translate the English to them? Let's say they're, you know, from China or, you know, someplace else?
Yes, ma'am, we can actually download those off of the HUD website itself.
Oh, okay.
And we also have a language proficiency guide that we go by. So we have like ASL interpreters, and then there's like a hotline that we can call in, and they'll transfer, because we do have some families that are Vietnamese-speaking only, so.
Thank you very much. It was nice work.
Oh, Natasha.
Sorry.
When you move or relocate someone, you do adhere to the replacement relocation?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Howell.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Who is the expert that says, yes, they have been violated? And/or is there an investigation when they claim that they've been sexually assaulted, or?
With, with the new, the new notice, it's actually, those forms in the back are self-certification forms. So they self-certify them. They are legal documents, so any sort of forgery, anything like that, those kind of laws would come into place, I'm assuming. But they did announce it a while back, I think it was in 2013, when they came out with, I think the last form was 50667, and that form started the self-certification part. And so they self-certify them. When they, when they come to us, we do give them information to Tri County, as well as different agencies that could possibly help them. And with this one, it did change, like, the language is now stalking sexual assault, and so it's not just domestic violence.
But nobody at the Housing Authority is the expert saying that, yes, you have been violated?
We, we just look and make sure the forms are completely and thoroughly filled out. And I do the fair housing and the reasonable accommodations. So I do look at them, and then I'll review them with our director as well. And then if we need to get the attorney involved or anything like that, or if it's an easy transfer, or, it just depends on what they're asking us for.
And this also states that you will provide accommodations as available?
Yes.
Correct?
And as physically responsible.
And what if there is no housing or bill accommodations?
We can only do what we can do. As far as we can refer them to shelters in Albuquerque, if we can't transfer them somewhere, we can refer them to Tri County and work with Tri County if we need to actually, if the relocation is really imperative there. But that would be where more domestic violence advocates would come into play than the actual Housing Authority's responsibility to them, if we couldn't accommodate them.
So how long is the time period before they do get relocated? Or?
It's an emergency relocation. So they're, they're the emergency relocation. So as soon as a unit would become available, they'd be at the top of the list to transfer.
And again, going back to the other question, if there isn't any available accommodations, how long is the time period before they get away from that area or that unit that they've been either sexually assaulted or are domestic violence?
As sad as it is, Commissioner, we can't, we can't kick out XYZ family to move A and B family because there's a creditor. Like, we really, it's just on availability. We can't necessarily, you know, the house that might become available might be the one across the street. We don't know where we can place them until it actually happens. And then hopefully, we have something in a different area for them. And it is very disheartening, but we can only do what we can do.
You had mentioned that you find accommodations in shelters and things like that?
Yeah, we would reach out to other parties in Albuquerque or...
Do we have partnerships in those areas?
We don't have partnerships per se, but we do have the ability to reference, refer them to them. So we can call them and ask for referrals in Santa Fe or in Albuquerque and see if maybe they could take them. And again, it is up to the family, and they have to make the choice to stay on the list or relocate.
This policy was developed by HUD? Is that correct?
The transfer policy itself?
Yes.
This individual for each Housing Authority. All HUD does is provide us guidance onto how to write it.
So this Housing Authority developed this?
Yes. But the, the forms behind it are all HUD forms. And the VAWA form itself, that's all the HUD guidance. That's all, that all comes off of the HUD website.
I just was concerned about the time that they are going to be staying in that unit because of the violence that they experienced till the time that they get transferred, because it's very traumatic for them to stay in the, in the unit that they experienced that violence.
And, and we understand that. We just, we have to have availability, and it's not like we want vacant units, but it's kind of one of those things, if it's a five-bedroom, where can we put another five-bedroom? If it's, you know, that kind of stuff.
Do you, do you have availability to place them in motels or hotels to get them, get them away from that unit?
That would be something we would have to work with the advocacy centers about as far as paying for it. We can displace them while we're working on the unit, but I don't think we can financially pay for the unit, a hotel stay, to get them out. I think that would come more through Tri County or another domestic violence program. The Housing Authority themselves, we are federally funded. We have guidelines we have to abide by. We, we can't just do that kind of stuff. As sad as it, as much as we'd want to, we also have guidelines we have to follow.
One last question. What is the liability of City of Las Vegas in regards to something might reoccur in that same unit before you either get transferred or removed?
I think I'd have to ask the attorney on that one. I don't know.
Yes, of course, we'll refer to...
Yeah, in, in general, criminal acts, by another word, not something that would, that would be foreseeable and therefore that somebody would be civilly liable in a legitimate sense. But obviously, HUD's policy, they adapt this towards the goal of keeping victims and survivors as safe as possible and giving them as many options as possible. Presumably, notice and requesting an accommodation then imposes a duty upon the Housing Authority to implement policies. It develops on policies.
Thank you, Corina. Any other questions?
So there's no liability?
That's not, it's not a clear-cut question like that. You know, duties are imposed, we have a duty to follow our own policy. What we're looking at here is our policy, which does state that we encourage survivors to act in their best interest, which sometimes is a very difficult step just right there, and to request help of us. And this is the kind of help that we can and cannot give. We cannot put everybody up at a hotel room. But we do regularly partner with the types of organizations that Natasha was describing. And as you know, we could, we could use to bring more of that more to Las Vegas in terms of a true, true shelter. But we do partner with organizations as far away as something, Tri County. And also Samaritan House does some transitional vouchers in terms of the hotel option for a temporary scenario, so.
I just hope we don't get to that point. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Natasha.
Thank you.
Okay, so what is the pleasure of the commission? This is item number one.
Madam Mick.
Ms. Ortiz.
Chair. I move that we approve Resolution Number... I don't know what number it was.
1742.
1742. To...
Rescind?
To rescind the previous policy and adopt the new policy as presented this evening.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Commissioner Romano?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Howell?
No. And for the reason of my concerns that I stated.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Unibari?
Yes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Casey, a second by Commissioner Unibari. Madam Chair, what's yours?
Thank you. Ms. Ortiz.
The next item on the agenda, Madam Chair, is the approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 17-41 to rescind and replace the previous City of Las Vegas Housing Authorities.
Excuse me. Did you make these statements on the record that the first one passed? Okay. Thank you. Ms. Ortiz.
The City of Las Vegas Housing Authority's Maintenance Program, including preventative maintenance procedures, and to authorize the Las Vegas Housing Authority to submit all documents necessary for the approval of the October 2017 City of Las Vegas Housing Authority Maintenance Program, including preventative maintenance procedures.
Okay. Questions, comments? Ms. Ortiz.
I have a question on page 13. Number one, under inspection methodology. It says, "The crew performing the maintenance inspection shall adhere to the following sequence. Number one, knock on the door, state the purpose of the visit, and politely ask for admittance. If no one is home, crew members are to let themselves in, perform the inspection, and leave a note. I would like to know if employees are going to be entering homes while no one is there. What kind of background checks or vetting is done for the employees that would be doing that?"
Okay, Corina.
I think that's, to the extent it's addressed to me, Counselor Casey.
Whoever can answer.
We do have elsewhere in our ACOP policy, there is 48 hours written notice required on those. My understanding is that providing for also the scenario where the resident has not scheduled that time to have to rescind that notice, that we are also required, and this is included in the maintenance policy as well as in our admissions and continued occupancy policy, we are required to leave a note to say that we have been, we have conducted that inspection. As to the human resources element of it and screening, that is the question that I have researched and studied. So we'll have to get back to you on that unless there is, unless there is somebody more knowledgeable, either here from Human Resources or City Manager.
Ms. Trujillo.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. Aren't your employees certified? Your maintenance? Isn't there a certification for them?
There are several certifications for them. On this one, I would have to do some research on. But they are certified on several levels.
I have just one thing. Normally, before they go into a unit, there's a work order performed, and the tenant is, it's actually at the tenant's request that we're going in to perform any sort of inspection on the water heater or anything like that. So the tenant is actually asking us to go in and perform something. Normally, we'll ask them to put a phone number or some sort of contact so we can let them know prior to maintenance going in. They do, if nobody is there, they will not go in by themselves. They do do a two-person, they'll go back, get another employee, and then they go together, and they'll knock, try again. They'll attempt to make contact before they will enter in a unit. That is, that the tenant is not in. So they do.
And that, that's wonderful, but that doesn't answer Commissioner Casey's question. See, the policy states, okay, that if no one is home, the crew members are to let themselves in. Now, you're stating normally, they have someone. That's not stated in the policy. The bottom line is even if they requested, if they are unavailable at home at that point in time, then do they enter? And are this individual certified through a chart? Now, Ms. Trujillo, I'm pretty sure they are, because they go through an extensive process of background checks. So if somebody could please answer that?
Chair, I think there's two questions, Madam Mayor. One is Counselor Casey's question. By letting themselves in there, you know, has there been a background check on each one of these employees? And then the other one was part that, that, it's at the end of that. And leave a note. I mean, I would like, if you, if you could change that to, if they're not there, leave a note, instead of letting themselves in. Unless otherwise allowed by the tenant.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? Cassandra would like to answer. Just get up here. Okay.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
There's a question on page 13 of the inspection methodology for the crew performing maintenance. And the question is, go ahead, thank you. And the question from Commissioner Casey was, "To what degree are these individuals that go in, or do they get background checks?" Give her a full review of that.
Yes, all of our pre-hires, our employees, get a background check, a thorough one, through Samba. And depending on where they've lived in the different states, we'll, we'll do the background in all the states that they've been living in. And we also go through our police department as well.
So then, all employees who would have access to... So then, all employees who would have access to a housing unit have been thoroughly vetted before they can go in and do an inspection for maintenance?
Now, that's our employees. I don't know about your housing tenants, is that?
No.
Just the maintenance, yes.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. Commissioner Howell? I'm sorry. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I just want to make a comment to Ms. Ortiz. Ms. Ortiz did an excellent job in addressing a maintenance problem at one of the residents' homes. And you and I talked about it, and Ms. Ortiz also did a comprehensive recap letter to me and to the resident that was there. And I think that both of you had knocked on the door, did all the procedures that you had listed here. And you also made a previous, a pre-arrangement with the residents to make sure that they are home and address the problems at hand. I think that if that procedure is followed, I think that you have been doing a great job on that, so I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, what is the pleasure of the commission?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Casey.
I move approval of resolution number seventeen dash forty-one to rescind and replace the previous City of Las Vegas Housing Authority Maintenance Program, including preventative maintenance procedures, and to authorize the Las Vegas Housing Authority to submit all the necessary documents for the approval of the October 2017 City of Las Vegas Housing Authority Maintenance Program to whoever they need to send it to.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We'll call.
Commissioner Uliwari?
There it is.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Howell?
If I may, before I make that, was there an amendment by Mr. Manager to this policy? You had mentioned that we should make a correction.
Just for her to look into, can they let themselves in?
Right.
If that's part of their policy, then we don't have to amend it.
Okay, so you didn't want us to change it?
Okay.
My vote is yes.
Commissioner Romano?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Casey, a second by Commissioner Romano. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioners reports. Ms. Davis?
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay, Ms. Romano.
I don't have anything.
Ms. Casey.
I have nothing.
Ms. Howell?
I'd made my comments to Ms. Ortiz. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Ms. Uliwari?
I don't have anything.
Okay, do we have need for executive session? Okay, we need a motion for adjournment.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Casey.
I move adjourned.
We'll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Uliwari?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Howell?
Yes.
Commissioner Romano?
Yes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Casey, a second by Commissioner Davis. Thank you, Madam Chair. Motion carries.
For the record, I want to tell everyone that meeting we just had with public housing, the regular meeting is definitely coming. So those of you who are here for the regular meeting, it'll be five minutes. We're behind everyone.
And that's right, we have a policy. And that's right, we have a policy. That's what you want. Is that what you're saying? Very.
I'm not going to argue with you, you're right.
Again, the one, more than one.
Well, it's when it's managed, it's rational. So I think it's a city.
What do you see?
It's not like I'm not.
Que acento rojo. Ya fuiste el gajón.
No te has.
En el oeste, que hay poco más tiempo.
How are you doing?
I've seen you. The main thing that's going on is this nation, the critics, tonight, Beth Urick's going to be doing public attention, and she's going to be asked to learn lots of knowledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. How's your health? Motion carries.
Coleman of silence for the community members that we have lost here in Las Vegas. I know that we recently lost a wonderful member of our community, and all the people that are losing their lives and the families in Santa Rosa, California. Please keep them in mind.
Thank you. First item is the approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Howell?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as is.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll call.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Omero?
Yes.
Commissioner Howell?
Yes.
Commissioner Uliwari Jr.?
Yes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Howell, a second by Commissioner Omero. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next item is the approval of minutes, September thirteenth, September twentieth, and September twenty-fifth of 2017.
Thank you, what is the pleasure board?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Casey.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes for September thirteenth, September twentieth, and September twenty-fifth. I did send in corrections that have already been placed on our versions that we have in our computers, and I want to thank our city clerk for being so fast about making those corrections. They're awesome.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We'll call.
Commissioner Uliwari Jr.?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Omero?
Yes.
Commissioner Howell?
Yes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Casey, a second by Commissioner Omero. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Next item, Mayor, is recognitions or proclamations.
It's actually Mayor's appointments and reports.
I'm sorry, appointments or reports?
There are going to be some changes in appointments for some of the committees. The Desiree is still preparing, those are some of the that have resigned. We will be bringing those to council, okay, but not at this moment. Next.
Mayor's recognitions or proclamation.
Okay, I would like to recognize here today, let me get this out of the bag. And grateful appreciation for many years of dedication and service to the City of Las Vegas, presented to Estolano Stoy Chavez Jr., August the second, two thousand and three, through September twenty-ninth, two thousand and seventeen. Congratulations, Stoly, could you come up?
Thank you very much. Your dedication to the City of Las Vegas, I'm eternally grateful for your hard work and dedication.
Yes, I know it's a long road, and you stayed with it, congratulations, and enjoy your retirement.
I love my job, and everybody's looking at me.
Exactly, thank you. I'm glad you had the day.
Thank you. Wow.
Be careful with your step. Congratulations. Que buena suerte.
I told you I'd make it. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much. I give you.
And we have Bruce McCallister, we'll be talking about transparency.
Hi, Bruce McCallister, still live in the same old spot on Jesse Lee Lane. I have a real concern. My real concern is that people in the community are not coming back and hearing what the city is doing, okay? Whatever restaurant you happen to go to, you can come back and find a bunch of people that are coming back and talking bad about the city. And that doesn't have to happen. If the city was more proactive, getting out and coming back and sharing, however they do it, my suggestion, okay, was send ads, but I've been told that's very expensive, okay? I know when I ran for office, it was not, okay? But I'm not coming back and arguing with anyone. I'm just saying we need to come back and be able to roll out to the community on a frequent basis, and maybe that's where Lee does, okay, and tell about the good things that we are doing and the good things we plan on doing, and those things we have no plans in current to do a damn thing about them, okay? And when you come back and tell people the truth, it's really amazing, okay, how well they come back and accept it. But when you don't talk to them, it's everybody's going, and chewing on everybody but whoever they show it. So my thought is increase the transparency, okay? And I don't know if that's individual, okay, counselors coming back, okay, and having meetings, okay, with their folks, okay? I don't, I'm not going to be prescriptive. I'm just telling you, you need to do a better job.
Thank you, Mr. McCallister.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Next, we have Beth Urick, we'll be talking about the contest.
Madam Mayor, counselors.
Thank you, Beth.
May I stand?
Absolutely. I live at twelve eighteen Seventh Street, Las Vegas, New Mexico. What a thrill it would be for us to receive $150,000 to help refurbish the E. Romero Firehouse. And even more valuable would be the publicity that we would get from American Express and National Geographic for at least a year for our city. We would be the best historic preservation town in the United States of America. In 2006, a similar contest was held by ABC Good Morning America, and it was to determine the most beautiful place in the United States. And the winner was an area not unlike our Las Vegas. Rural, somewhat remote, not much industry, although they had had a big lodging, logging industry in the eighteenth and nineteenth century. But when they won, everyone in the community was so proud, it increased tourism, it increased the economy, and I think we should be doing this for the City of Las Vegas, and we're very far along. You know, we have this contest, and there are 25 finalists, there are going to be 10 final finalists. At the moment, we're number six, but we have two more weeks in which to vote. And I know that the other cities are going to up their voting. And my suggestion is that we have teams, teams of five, because getting on the website is sometimes a little tricky, but once you're on the website, you can encourage family and friends to vote five times a day with one click. I would be very honored if you, the mayor and the counselors, would agree to be team leaders, to have you and four other members in your family or your friends or workplace to produce 25 votes a day for the next two weeks, and to set an example and be the leadership, and we would follow in your footsteps so that we would be able to say, yes, I live in the best historic preservation town in the United States of America. I live in Las Vegas, New Mexico. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Wood Slick, he'll be talking about the contest.
Sounds so strange to be talking about something that isn't lodger stacks. I want to give you some key numbers. Beth recruited you for upping us what we can do locally, instead of each of us voting individually, what we can do if each of us puts together a team. Right now, our average daily votes in Las Vegas is 1,500. And if we added 60 teams, of which y'all are the first five, we would add another 1,500 votes a day, which would put us even with the first-place team, the first-place city in the country. But there's some other exciting news. That's what we can do here. But Albuquerque is getting behind this contest and behind Las Vegas. I think all of you know that Channel Four and Channel Seven have already run pieces, and I got some great news just this afternoon, just in time to come tell you. Clear Channel Outdoor Company in Albuquerque are going to give us $5,800 of free advertising about the contest on Albuquerque electronic billboards. With what we can buy, in addition to that, for a fairly reasonable amount, we can generate 1,500,000 media impressions a day. If that 1,500,000 media impressions had a 0.5% return, we would have another 2,500 votes a day, and that's enough to knock it off the charts. So at first, I thought we were within kissing distance of winning it. Now, we're within spitting distance. And, but there's things we can do here, and there's more we can do in Albuquerque. In between that, they're going to be trying to catch us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Almost there.
Mayor, that's it for public input.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next is our presentation. We have a presentation by John Spencer, reporting on the Tree Board Committee.
Madam Mayor. Counselors, it's a pleasure to appear in front of you. You may have some idea of what's going to happen at the end of this little presentation that's happened 18 times before in this city. And I'd like to take just a minute to talk to you a little bit about the Tree Board, who we are, what we do, and what we hope to accomplish. And the first thing I think we want to mention, we can give you chapter and verse on how trees reduce crime rates and increase property And they, they're one of the things that helps to bind the community together. They provide places for the community to come together, watch their kids play, have a picnic, quiet spot to sit in the shade, read a book, talk to each other. How about that? Community celebrations, fiestas. We're pretty proud of Plaza Park. And you can, other places, other parks where we've done work, you can play a little league. And Rodriguez Park, we had organized softball and things like that. So what this basically says is that parks indeed are an important community resource, and they improve the quality of life for citizens of Las Vegas and visitors to town. We sit under trees that were planted by previous generations. We benefit from their efforts they made, which turn out to be on our behalf. I think that means that we owe it to the people who will come after us to make the same kind of effort so that we can assure that our children and their children will have a safe and beautiful place to enjoy. There's a favorite Chinese saying, that one generation plants the trees, another gets the shade. And we certainly are benefiting from the activities of our forebears. The Tree Board itself serves the community by advising on community forestry issues, helping to plan, plant, and protect the community forest of Las Vegas. We have three basic goals. The first is to increase the safety for the citizens of our, we're interested in the entire community forest. We've kind of, kind of worked more on parks than we have on street trees, and, but we need to be thinking about the street trees as well. But the first priority is to improve the safety of the forest for the citizen. We've, I'm sure you know about the trees falling down, branches falling off of them hurting people, and that certainly is something we want to try to mitigate by the removal of hazardous limbs and of trees that are actually dangerous. And one of the problems we have here is that a lot of our trees were planted about the same time, and they have come to the end of their expected lifespan. So we need to not only be thinking about trying to maintain them, which is the second thing we try to do, but we also need to think about underplanting and renewing the forest if we're going to have a good forest, a healthy forest for future generations. So first, we deal with safety. Second, we want to preserve and enhance the lives of the trees that we already have. And that's done by pruning them and trying to keep them as healthy as possible for as long as possible. And then finally, the third thing is the thing you would think that we would be doing, trying to provide the community with a safe and pleasant place to enjoy nature, little respite and refuge. And that's kind of our reason for being. We have a number of members on the Tree Board, and I think it's worthwhile to tell you about them because, because I think we got the right people at the table. We need a few more, but we've got the right people at the table now. The Tree Board members are all volunteers, and they serve at the pleasure of the mayor and indeed of the council. We have partnerships with a number of institutions, and the members on the Tree Board are examples of that. The first is the city of Las Vegas. And we want to welcome and mention Consuelo Bagos, who is now the Director of Parks. She's new to the committee. We're glad that she's there, and I'm going to brag on her a little bit later. We're going to talk a little bit about Harris Pond and about a tree survey that was just done, where she has just taken the bull by the horns and has proactively done a bunch of good things for this city. And so we're, we're very pleased to have Consuelo with us. We also have Shannon Atencio, who represents the New Mexico State Forestry Division. She's Timber Management Officer right here. And we have, standing right here is a reformed urban commercial arborist. And arborist basically just means somebody who takes care of trees, is Tom Lambert. And we have three members from the Tierra y Montes Soil and Water Conservation District. And they have, they have been behind us for years, and we are very, very grateful for their participation. The first is Francis Martinez. She's the Director of the Tierra y Montes Soil and Water Conservation District, and she has been a fiscal agent for just about every grant that we've gotten. She also provides us with reading space and great counsel. Steve Reichert, and I don't know how many of you might know him, but he's pretty well-known around here. He's from Tierra y Montes and very active in the community, things like Friends of the Refuge and that sort of thing. And he was what was called a project facilitator for fieldwork. So he's a conservation profession. And he retired this last year. And we have a new member, another new member on the Tree Board that represents Tierra y Montes, is Gerald Romero. And he is now the project facilitator for field projects that replaced Steve. Steve was on the committee as a representative of Tierra y Montes, but now he just decided he's going to stay on as an interested citizen. We're very, very pleased about that. The NMSU Mora Tree Research Station is represented by Kami Parsons, and they have donated trees and seedlings and have a great deal of positive impact here. Another member, Paul Stagner, has got retail nursery experience. Elizabeth Gardner is another member who has ISA certification, and that's the International Society for Arboretry Culture. And I'm telling you, you want to be certified by those people, you better come ready to work. There's, there's books of stuff you've got to know. You've got to know fieldwork. She's got several kinds of certifications. So we've got a bunch of people who know about trees and in various aspects. Then there's the other two of us, Nancy Lippi and me. And Nancy Lippi is what we call an interested citizen. And I don't know if you've, if you've been around and bound to her long enough, you know she's real. And she has been on the Tree Committee or the Tree Board longer than, I don't know, than I can remember, certainly. She recruited me to come up here. And she's the secretary, and I must be in organizations. You know, the secretary is actually the boss. And she, she keeps us in order. She gets our agendas out, does the minutes. You all get the minutes. And the other thing I want to mention about, we're going to talk to you a little bit about this Tree City USA award in just a second. And the application for that thing is just massive, and it involves getting people from Highlands and the city and PNM to do things like write letters saying how much money they'd spent on tree-related activities. It's a real pain to get it done, and Nancy, sitting right there, does that every year. And it's just remarkable, her energy and her spirit and expertise who actually do this running. And then there's me, I'm just a retired biologist. But on the end, I'm interested in what's going on, and I retired from Highlands and did some work at the Royal College. But that's who we are. We also partner with Highlands with Robert Duran, who's, who is over there. He's not really actually a member of the Tree Board, but we do coordinate with him. We've done advising on Melody Park. We're going to talk just a second about this thing called the Historic District Tree Survey. And that came, the state did it, and they offered training in evaluating the condition of trees. And the city came, the Tree Board members came, Highlands came, so a whole bunch of people got good education from this project. And Robert Duran is the, is our contact guy.
I'm Alex, Madam Mayor.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. Well, we wanted to make sure to thank Councilor Ulbricht for attending one of our meetings. And that leads me to the begging for your participation part. We would be more than happy to have you come to our meetings there on Tuesday, last Tuesday of the month, 3:30 in the afternoon, Tierra y Montes Soil and Water Conservation District. And the public is invited to attend. What I would like to encourage the members of the council to do is to maybe think about nominating somebody from their ward to the Tree Board. We'd like to have broader community support, and that's one good way to get it. So if you'd consider that, we'd be real happy about that. Recently, we have done things like, I think you've heard us do periodic reports to this, to the council on the quality of the forest, pruning and development projects in city parks, including Plaza Park, Veterans, Carnegie, Lincoln, Rodriguez, Murrah Hoop, Keys, Rua Pierce, and others. South Pacific is high on our list. As soon as we can get adequate water there, we're not, we don't plant anyplace where we don't have water anymore because of the undependability of the stuff that comes out of the sky. In 2017, we did participate in this New Mexico State Forestry Project that evaluated the condition of street trees in the historic districts and in county seats around New Mexico. We are here today to celebrate the partnership with the city. Public Works Director Veronica Gentry, and I believe, is she here?
Yes, she is.
She is here, want to give her compliments. We have seen very good cooperation between streets and parks lately. And I mentioned Consuelo already. Chris Legarte and Streets is also somebody who deserves some praise. These people have gotten together and they, between Streets and Parks, together they've done a lot of stuff. Consuelo and Chris have worked together with New Mexico Game and Fish on Harris Pond. And I don't know if you went to Harris Pond much, but it's a whole lot nicer now. Streets came and helped with willow removal. They've been mowing. They've got plans for additional landscaping, rocks, and benches and tables and signage that are going up. It's just turning it into actually a nice place. The Historic Street Tree Survey identified some trees for removal. And without even, you know, begging for help, Consuelo and Streets people again together have gone and they have taken down six trees that were recommended for removal by this survey, the statewide survey. And, and it just means that the city is actually making a commitment to the health and vitality and longevity of the community forest. And we're real, real proud about that. I do want to sneak in a minute or two and tell a story on Richard Trujillo. Many, many years ago, we were trying to develop a park just above the bridge on Bridge Street on the River Walk. It's Rua Pierce Park. And we had some, some small grants to do it, and we got the Royal College kids to work on it. We got the kids from Valmora to work on it. We all worked on it. At the time, Richard was, was the utilities director. And he and his staff got us these gigantic rocks, and, and I don't know how they got them there. But, but they are responsible for the, a lot of the landscaping and the general topography of the Rua Pierce Park, which has turned out to be a really, really nice thing. So I just wanted to say thanks to Richard. He's been our kind of a friend of ours and a helper of ours for years and years. We applaud the commitment that's been demonstrated by the city to the preservation and development of our parks and our town forests. These efforts, along with the Tree Board, have combined to earn an award that I'm proud to have Tom tell you about and present to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, in order to be named a Tree City by the National Arboretre Foundation, a community must have a tree ordinance, an active tree board, and they must participate in tree-related activities. Having complied with these requirements, it is with great pride that I announce that the city of Las Vegas, New Mexico, for the 18th year in a row, 18th year in a row, has been re-certified as a Tree City USA. And I have a couple of presentations if I may.
Absolutely.
We have a flag.
This will go in the city collection. They may have 18 of them.
This one's the newest and cleanest. You may want to hang that up.
All right. This is Madam Mayor. Hope you can find us a good flag for them.
That makes a nice windbreaker on the way.
In addition, I'd like to present, you have a 2016 Tree City USA metal sticker that goes with the flag. I believe this will go to you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
And I would like to present this hat to Consuelo, our Director of Parks, for her to model.
That's why you did my hair the way you did.
All right. There you go.
And I might also give you these, a little favor to go get.
Let's fix on the sign.
Let's fix on the sign. Good job. And if we do have an executive session to go to, so if there's no further business, we'll take her. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all of this.
Okay. Next presentation is by Paul Cassidy from Capital Markets, reporting on the financial status of the water utility.
Welcome, Mr. Trujillo.
How are you?
If you don't mind, I'll sit down. Mayor, Council.
Make yourself comfortable.
Good evening. It's nice to be here with you. We've been working with your staff, as you probably know, for quite some time. One of the purposes for continuing to work with the staff is to monitor the water system's debt capacity. And also, at the last presentation we had done, we received some comments that there was so much information in our last briefing packet that maybe it was not as understandable as it should be. So Councilor Howell in particular said, can't we simplify this and kind of make it a little more understandable? So we're going to test it, see if this works. We're going to begin with a presentation, I believe, a consular passed out to each of the persons. And where we're going to begin is on page one, which summarizes the utility's outstanding debt. The city does have an enterprise fund. It's the city's water enterprise fund. You have other enterprise funds for natural gas and sewer, solid waste. This is just one of the business units within the city of Las Vegas whose intent is to operate without subsidy. The idea is that you have water charges pursuant to rate ordinances that produce enough income to pay the operation and maintenance expenses of the utility and to pay any debt charges that you've incurred as a result of making improvements to or expanding the system. So if you turn to that page one of the presentation, I'll just summarize briefly. We have two lien levels of debt outstanding, and this would be equivalent to a first mortgage and a second mortgage on the net revenues generated from operation of the water enterprise fund. We have 10 loans that are senior lien loans. The average interest rate is about a quarter percent. As you've taken out these loans for various high-priority projects that the council had determined were high priority, you've also applied for matching money from other entities like the state and New Mexico. And generally speaking, about for every dollar that you borrowed, you have $3 worth of grant money that the city has been able to achieve. So we currently have 1.8 million of this senior lien debt outstanding. There's a debt service coverage requirement, meaning you have to set rates and charges of your utility sufficient to pay 1.2 times the annual debt service. And the way this works is that you have a revenue line item, you have an operation and maintenance line item. What is left over is net revenues that are available to pay for capital improvements or to pay bond debt service, and it has to be at least 1.2 times. That's just a covenant of your, of the folks that have loaned the city money. In this case, the state and New Mexico's drinking water, or Water Trust Board Drinking Water Loan Program. We have 10 loans that are senior lien loans, the average interest rate is about a quarter percent. As you've taken out these loans for various high priority projects that the council had determined were high priority, you've also applied for matching money from other entities like the state of New Mexico. And generally speaking, about for every dollar that you've borrowed, you have $3 worth of grant money that the city has been able to achieve. So we currently have 1.8 million of the senior lien debt outstanding. There's a debt service coverage requirement, meaning you have to set rates and charges of your utility sufficient to pay 1.2 times the annual debt service. And the way this works is that you have a revenue line item, you have an operation and maintenance line item. What is left over is net revenues that are available to pay for capital improvements or to pay bond debt service, and it has to be at least 1.2 times. That's just a covenant of your, of the folks that have loaned the city money, in this case, the state of New Mexico's drinking water, or Water Trust Board Drinking Water Loan Program. We also have borrowings outstanding for subordinate lien debt, seven of these, Water Trust Board loans. These are smaller loans. They total 487,000. If I didn't mention it, the senior lien debt is 1.86 million. With regard to these types of loans, they're carefully managed to maximize grant money that is available to the city through the state of New Mexico. For every dollar that you've taken down with this sort of debt, you've generated nine times that in grant loan funds. So they've been well managed. In aggregate, so we have about 500,000 of outstanding debt service through 2036. The senior lien debt expires in 2039. The debt service coverage requirement on subordinate lien debt is much more lenient, and the coverage requirement is one times. So if you will, with that background, we have, what, about 2.3 million of outstanding debt that pays off through 2039. Included in the presentation is the actual debt service payments through maturity, and I'll point that out during a little while. So your staff has a very detailed list of infrastructure water projects that you need to fund over time. Everything wears out. So the idea is that old pipes have to be replaced, water treatment plants have to be replaced, dams have to be replaced, and a good facility master plan looks at all those projects, and then the council and staff, of course, with, working with council, help to prioritize those needs. And as things wear out, you know, you have certain levels of priority that you need to identify. So when you add up all these things, as your staff has done, we find that $78 million of projects have been identified as critical projects, critical. They really can't wait, quite frankly, and they need a meeting of attention. And 70 million, an additional 70 million, is identified as important projects. And 33% of all of these projects have to be dealt with over the next five years, according to staff and your professionals that manage your system. So 149, 150 million dollars worth of projects, and we have critical needs for a substantial amount of that that needs to be addressed. And then, based upon our prior work with, that we presented to council, we think your ability to borrow is, would result in a financing bond issue, if you will, or a loan, that would generate about $12 million in proceeds to deal with this 150 million dollars worth of needs. In 2012, city council hired Red Oak Consulting. Red Oak Consulting's purpose was to look at your rate structure and to look at your capital requirements, make recommendations to the council on the rate structure, and how much of a rate increase would be required in addition to looking at the structure of rates to deal with capital improvements. At that time, they had recommended a series of rate increases that totaled well over 100%. The council actually took action and approved those rate increases. And over time, since 2013, we have been monitoring what the revenues of the system have been, what it's generated as a result of that rate structure, and have been, and I think you're aware of this, found out that the revenues aren't coming in as projected, and there's a couple of reasons for that. And we've all heard a number of things that we feel are the reasons for that not happening. One is that the structure of the rate increase really was not quite right. We need more of the revenue put at a fixed fee level to all your constituents to fully recover the cost of having the infrastructure in place and the availability of water resources. Another is that you've lost population. And another is that you continue to lose some businesses, and things like the public schools are going to be closing down facilities as they try to adequately and properly manage the school facilities and what's going on with students. So we do have some recommendations, and these are recommendations you've probably heard from me historically, but at the request of staff, we decided to put them in writing for you and happy to stand for questions. We would suggest that the council consider a new rate study and review of the rate structure and the allocation of revenues among customer classes, and whether it's at a variable rate or a fixed rate should be really considered and moved forward with as soon as possible. Revenues from customers should be maintained at a level sufficient to, number one, fund O&amp;M, which is operation maintenance levels, at a comfortable level, which we think is about $3.7 million a year. That's what you need just to operate the system. That doesn't include capital expenses, and it doesn't include bond debt service either. This is just your operation and maintenance expenses, staff, the things you need to do to maintain your system, pay its own utilities and so forth. Another is to maintain adequate operating reserves, which your rate consultant recommended to be three months of O&amp;M expenses, which would be about $900,000 a year. A third is to maintain a capital reserve for fixed assets, because with an older system, and you're no different from a lot of communities across the country, fixed assets wear out, and if something happens, you need to have cash in the bank to deal with this. I guess it's a question as to what level of fixed assets you maintain it at. I would think it's somewhere around $900,000 in addition, $900,000 reserve. You need to have revenue sufficient, the fourth item, to permit cash funding for borrowings needed to improve your water facilities pursuant to a capital plan approved by council. The fifth is to pay principal and interest that you've incurred on a timely basis. And in sixth, to maintain a coverage level, we think the appropriate level is one and a half times the debt service payment, principal and interest payments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Continue.
I'm sorry. Continue.
Go ahead and continue.
Very good. Thank you. So those are the key ingredients to make your utility properly function. So with that, Madam Mayor and Council, I'd like to share some additional items with you, which is on page five. When we looked at what the utility director has pulled together in terms of prioritized capital improvements, one of the things we asked for to include was what are the current projects council has approved or is moving forward on? These are critical projects, generally speaking. These are projects that needed to be done and are being done, and they totaled $29 million. Of that, 23 million has been received from sources outside of the city, whether it's the Water Trust Board, NMFA loans, FEMA, et cetera. And approximately 5.6 million is cash funded. That is, the utility rates that your rate payers are paying, that cash is being used on a pay-as-you-go basis to deal with this first $29 million worth of capital projects. And that's in the table, kind of in the lower part of the table on the page here. And then we have an additional $21 million that needs to be done in the next one to five years. That totals $21 million, of which 18.6 million is critical on three million or important projects. And in the five to 10-year capital improvements bucket, you have another $32 million group of projects, of which 22 million are critical and 9.7 million are important. And then from 10 to 20 years, another $65 million worth of projects that'll need to be done, of which about 20 million are critical and another 45 million are important. And we did not categorize these, your utility staff, they're professionals in their business, and they prioritize these for you. 46% of the current project funding needs are really Bradner. That's about 90%, of which, 90% of Bradner's been funded with a grant. So that's terrific. And 73% of the water projects that are considered critical or important are for Bradner fill pipe, Bradner rehabilitation, and Story Lake storage. That's where those fall. A detailed list of all of these projects and how they were prioritized by staff is on page six for your information, and the source of funds for each project. So your staff's done a lot of good work to do this, to pull this together for us. Page eight is the, what I call the financial statement of a water utility. And what I like to do when we lay this sort of financial statement out is to put down what the revenues are, historically speaking, and try to project forward what your revenues from rates would be, and then to look at your operation and maintenance expenses, O&amp;M, like we talked about earlier, and the details of that, and look back historically to what they've been, and then to try to project forward a year or two. Right now, we don't have the 2017 audit available, so we just continue to use our 2016 numbers with the hope that in the next month or so, we can update council on the 2017 actual numbers and project 2018, and then to take it also to 2019. When we look at the middle part of the page, there's a line called net revenues available for debt service. And if you look at 2016, 17, and 18, they're the same number. And this is taking simply the revenues of the system, subtracting your operation and maintenance expenses, and this is what the cash flow of your utility is. And you can use this to make capital improvements. This is where you receive the 5.6 million to deal with current projects from this cash flow, and the rest of it can be used for debt service. And the priority is you pay debt service first, and then you pay capital improvements, by the way. It's just the legal structure under New Mexico law that we deal with. Below the line here, all of these series of bonds that are listed or loans are all the various loans that have been taken out, approved really by the state of New Mexico through the New Mexico Finance Authority for various projects that your staff has applied for, of which they're getting a lot of matching money when they do this. And these interest rates are from zero to a quarter percent, so they're really, really quite affordable. At the very bottom of the page is the coverage of debt service. There's senior lien coverage for your senior lien debt that we talked about at the top of the presentation, and then there's coverage for all of the senior lien and the subordinate lien debt. And we're currently very, very healthy at 12 times, 11 to 12 times coverage of bond debt service. If you look, however, back to 2013, before the rate increases took effect, your coverage wasn't so good, right? So now you had a lot more debt, and you had to do something about rates just to meet your covenants to your bondholders at the time. So your, the rate increase was obviously the right thing to do at the time. And you also built in, your taxpayers through their rates, enough money to allow you to do additional borrowings or to do pay-as-you-go funding for utility improvements. So what we have to do next, as a group, is to prioritize those improvements and see how we can match your requirements, your critical and important projects, to what the cash flow of the utility is, while at the same time embarking on a new rate study to figure out how to optimize your rate structure. And when you do all those three things together, you know, hopefully we come with a rate structure that can properly fund the capital needs of your water utility system. The next page is just a picture of what your debt capacity is, what your current debt service is. Your current debt service, by the way, is $129,000 a year. So you've done a lot. Your debt service is only that. When we did the original finance plan as a result of your rate study in 2012, we anticipated that your debt service could be as high as $1.8 million. But you've not done a lot of the projects yet, and you've got a lot of grant money to deal with this. So you're in a nice shape, but the question is, how do we deal with the rest of this as we go forward? Happy to address any questions about that. I still stick with the $12 million capacity if rates stay the way they are, and assuming a 22-year amortization schedule on the bonds and assuming a New Mexico Finance Authority loan with a very comfortable interest rate margin. On page 11, 12, and 13, the individual amortization schedule, principal and interest for all of your individual borrowings that are outstanding are shown and included. And if, and I won't go into detail unless council has a question, but if you go to page 15, included here references to the New Mexico state law that allows the city council to issue utility system revenue bonds and the requirements to do that, and certainly invite you to read through that. Again, the process is that you can pledge the revenues of the utility, and you first pay O&amp;M expenses, because you've got to keep the utility running. Secondly, you pay for your revenue bonds, and you can set up sinking funds, which are the payments on an annual basis. And anything left over after that, you can make capital improvements with or fund needed and necessary reserves. There is a provision here that if you don't set the rates and charges sufficient to pay your bond debt service and to provide the coverage, your bondholder's going to apply to district court to make sure rates are set sufficient to take care of that. And there's also a provision that once debt is outstanding, you really can't take away the pledged revenues that would impair a legal contract between bondholders and the city. We also have reference to the section of state law that allows this council to issue gross receipts tax revenue bonds. As you recall, we have 1/4% water gross receipts tax in effect, and that money is being collected, and that money's being, can only be used for water projects. It also can be used to pay bond principal and interest payments if you so desired to do that. We've got a number of other things just for your information, and a bond market update as well, since we're dealing with bonds, you know, we can also address and talk about bond interest rates, which remain very, very attractive, historically speaking. And you can borrow long-term fixed rate interest rates below 3% if, unless you can qualify for a 0 or 1/4% loan through the Water Trust Board or New Mexico Finance Authority's Drinking Water Program. That said, I think I'm going to pause for any questions.
Thank you. Council. Council Hal.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Mr. Trujillo, Mr. Paul Cassidy. How are you, sir? Council. Thank you very much for this presentation. There's a lot to take in, and I need to really read it more carefully. But I, question that I have is, if we were to bond out $12 million, what is the, how much more revenues do we need to have, or cash, we need to have to do the projects that are missed?
Mayor, Council, and Hal, you currently have sufficient rates and charges in effect to do approximately $12 million of debt. When you do that, though, you're committing to a recurring payment for principal and interest for approximately 22 years, if that's what council slugs as the amortization period. And you won't have as much cash to pay as-you-go projects, but there's that balance. Currently, we think, subject to the 2017 audit being released, that you have that revenue stream necessary to do more.
We do have the revenue stream to do the borrowing, plus the other projects?
No, just up to $12 million worth of the, if you will, of $150 million worth of needed infrastructure projects that have been identified.
Okay.
It's up to the council, he's determined, you know, how you prioritize that, and if and when you do a borrowing.
Like I said, there's a lot of information to take in, so if I may.
Madam Mayor, if I can ask the questions at a later time.
Well, he won't be here.
Right, but to our administration.
Yes, at that point in time, yes, you can. Any other questions? I have some questions. Now, you are asking on the rate structure that we have the $12 million capacity, but as you've stated, if we go with the rate structure on the current rate structure of the $12 million, then essentially we will not have enough money to prioritize and fund the priority, the important and the critical projects for the city unless we increase our rates again. Correct? That is my understanding based on my review.
Madam Mayor, that is correct, or to find an alternative source. And also to, I just want to make sure, I know, your staff has done a good job trying to get as much grant money as possible.
Yes, I know. The staff is outstanding.
So you, sometimes you need to preserve some of your bonding capacity to do the grant loan project.
I understand that. I understand that. And I appreciate you being here today, because I think the council does need clarity on this, because somewhere in there, the council, possibly, not all of you, but some of you, and also the community might be confused that we have the $12 million capacity at this point in time without further increases in the rate structure, which is absolutely incorrect. In order for us to be able to finish the critical and important projects, we need to increase the rates one more time. We have to go out through Red Oak or another consultant and increase those rates. Now, I'm going to make a bold statement here. I don't believe that the community can afford that at this point in time. This is my opinion, and I hope that the council is listening to what I am saying. I think that the rates that were imposed at the last round in 212 were quite steep. And I hear from constituents daily the impacts of those rate structures, not only within the community, but also within the ETC area. And it's very critical that we listen to our constituents. Now, everything that you have discussed here with regards to the loss of the people, the demographics in the area, everything that we are losing, the schools, everything, I do not foresee an increase in rate structure. And that's another issue that we have to take, I believe, for public input, let the people know that we are going to increase the rates again, because that's something that was done last time. I voted against it because I knew, and not because I didn't believe in the rate structure, but because I believed that there should have been a rate structure that was a little softer on the economy than what was imposed. I did not believe in the 27% or 60% rate structure or close to that. I think that was ridiculous, and I still say that. The other concern I had was the issue of the debt service. The debt service killed us, and you know that. The Moody's report was quite clear. We were red-flagged on that Moody's report because our debt service was far too high. I don't know what the Moody's report looks like to date. I have not reviewed that, but I'm certain that you have. And I don't know if we are still in a position that we can afford to increase another rate. But if the council feels that you can bring conscientiously a rate to the people and hit them with another rate, an increase of rate, let that be on you. But that's something that you have to look at. I appreciate this. I think this is a very comprehensive report, and I hope that the council does look at this very carefully, because this is something that is going to be an adverse impact to our community. And next time, if you could also bring the Moody's report, that would be quite beneficial, or unless you can give us an overview of it.
Madam Mayor and Council, the Moody's report was dealing with your general fund as opposed to your water fund.
Exactly.
And it also had...
But it includes the debt service of our communities.
On just your general fund debt, and it didn't address this, but I can actually give you a report that could focus more on your utility as opposed to your general fund.
That's fair enough.
The one thing the Moody's report did was comment on the pension fund debt.
Exactly.
Remember, they took that into account.
Yes, and we corrected that, I believe.
Which is PERA, exactly.
But that was a lot of money out of the general fund as well. So we are making a lot of corrections. We are addressing a lot of issues that had not been addressed, and in order to do that, it is also adversely impacting some of our general fund, as you all know, not utilities. Councilor Howell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Cassidy, our coverage requirement, it says here, net debt capacity for all liens basis is 1.5?
That would be a recommendation that we would make. It should be 1.5. It's currently, your debt holders enjoy a 1.2x coverage requirement. But if you let your expenses increase to the point where your coverage dropped to 1.2, you're not going to have any cash flow to do pay-as-you-go type funding. You need to have a good balance of pay-as-you-go. You don't want to borrow 100% of the capital money you need, because you're just going to pile interest upon interest.
So currently, it's 1.2, and the recommendation should be 1.5.
That would be a policy, Counselor. So you can have a legal covenant, and council could also establish a policy, just to make sure that you're operating the utility properly.
Could you do me a favor again, and on page eight? Yeah, page eight, there's all coverage.
Yes.
Right now, currently, 2016, we're at 14.32.
Yes, sure.
Isn't that more than 1.5?
It is, because you've not borrowed.
Okay.
You borrowed very minor compared to what you anticipated in 2012, when the council at the time approved the rate increase. That is, you were trying to produce a rate or revenue from rates sufficient to do borrowings to deal with capital. The rates were put into effect, but you've borrowed much slower than anticipated, so your coverage is very high. And the reason that you have so much coverage is that, I should say, the reason you have $12 million in capacity is that if you did do a $12 million borrowing, that coverage would go down to 1 and 1/2x.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Right, and 1 and 1/2x, you said, would be good.
Not as good as 1.2.
Yeah, 1.5 is better for the city in that you're leaving yourself the margin of half of your debt service expense to deal with capital improvements. I'll bet you, though, if you asked your staff, your staff would say, we would rather our coverage be 2x, because we need that cash to deal with unexpected things that come up in their life, in their daily life, as they're dealing with your utility. So when I say 1 and 1/2x, I mean, the cash flow of the enterprise ought to be at least 1 and 1/2x your debt service expense. And if your debt service expense goes down, goes up from $129,000 to $900,000, for instance, you really ought to have half of that $900,000, $450,000 as free cash flow to pay-as-you-go fund capital improvements. Okay? Right now, you have a lot of cash flow. It's about $1.3 million a year that you're using to do pay-as-you-go projects. That's great, actually. You're not borrowing and paying interest on the debt.
Okay, so just...
I know, there's two sides to this mirror, if you will. If you fully leverage your system, you're going to be less flexible.
Right now, it's 14.32, all-in coverage. And if we borrow the $12 million, it would go down to 1.5.
Right.
And previously, you just said that 1.5 is good.
1.5 is good for a water enterprise fund.
Right.
That is from a bond guy sitting here looking at coverage and investors looking to buy your debt. But when you talk to your staff, they're going to say, gosh, we need more cash than that on hand.
Okay, so 1.5 is not good for us, because we have all those other projects that we are...
It's a critical...
Critical. And will all those projects have to be done in one year or throughout the five to 10 years?
I think we're looking at five to 10 years. But each one of the projects, Madam Mayor and members of the council, Councilor Howell, so when you look at a critical project, that project has to get done. If it doesn't get done, then we compromise our integrity of our system. So that's how we look at all of these projects. They have to get done sooner than later.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Thank you for your presentation.
Actually, Madam Mayor, can I ask just one quick question?
Yes, one question.
So you have our current debt servicing numbers around $129,000 annually. If we were to max out what you're calling our capacity, leave that 1.5 breathing room, where would our annual debt servicing fall approximately? And I know you can't always assume NMFA rates for what the grant to...but let's say it was all loans and no grants. What would we be looking at annually to service that?
Madam Mayor, Madam City Attorney, it would be approximately $900,000. And I didn't bring that exact number, but you're going to take your annual fixed recurring expenses from $129,000 to, say, the $900,000 level. So that gives you less flexibility.
Exactly.
Is that where you're headed in terms of being able to have cash available just to deal with critical projects? So you have an option. You can just wait, and wait until you have cash on hand to do all these critical projects. And the question would be, how long does it take you to accumulate that cash? I mean, right now, you have almost all the money you need for the current projects, but projects in years one to five, you have another, what, $30 million that you need to figure out where to get the money from. It's on page five. You have $21 million worth of projects in year one to five, of which almost $19 million are critical. Can you accumulate that cash instead of borrowing and pay-as-you-go that and not borrow? I think it's going to be difficult, personally. At some point, you've got to balance those two things. And I'm here to help you run numbers to figure out if you can do that or not. And I'm not making any assumptions or preconceived notions of what this council would like to do. That's what we're here to, and that's why your staff's pulled all of this together, to figure out, how much do we really want to leverage? And how are we going to deal with these critical projects on a timely basis when it's time to do it? I hope I answered your question, because you can either fully leverage it, or you can not leverage it and do more pay-as-you-go funding. The question is, can you get it done timely?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do appreciate you greatly.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, next item is the City Manager's Report. I don't have one. I will have one at the next regular council meeting, based on the targets that we got from our retreat. So I'll have a full report as to where we're at according to each one of those targets.
Is the council okay with this? If it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. Okay?
Next is our finance report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Mr. City Manager. In front of you, we have put together the September 30, 2017, report, which is our first quarterly report. We've had three out of the 12 months, and what we want, what we'd like to do is, in November, whether it be the first or the second meeting, to bring you the DFA report, which will show you revenues received through September 30 and the approval from DFA, if in fact there is approval or recommendations by DFA. But through September 30 of this year, general fund has received 23% of their revenues. We should be at 24%. One of the issues is, of course, our property taxes that won't be coming until December and January. On the expenditure side, we're at 22%, and one of the reasons being is that we have our insurances that are paid off in half, six months of the year. Our insurances are paid off in August, and then, of course, in January. And so you'll see an increase in those expenditures as well. But when you look at the individual departments, we're all doing pretty well. We're staying within the 24% where we should be. And I will entertain any questions.
Questions?
No.
Continue.
The Recreation Department is at 21% of their revenue and at 22% of their expenditures. And Recreation is being quite cautious in some of their expenditures as well. And we're still looking at some of the other events that we're...
Yeah, all the other programs.
That we're going to be doing. And so we're continuing to look at that as well. And the enterprise funds, they're at 21%. The natural gas naturally is going to be lower, because we haven't gotten into some of our cold months. But they are also at 19% of their expenditures, and they should be at 24%. So they're also maintaining their expenditures and bringing in the revenues. The water alone is at 28%, but those are our summer higher months of the year, Madam Mayor. If you have any questions?
Questions? Comments? I have one question. On the 46% for the capital outlay of the Recreation expenditure comparison, would you explain that?
That was when, at the beginning of the year, we ended up, she was needing equipment for the swimming pool, and so we made some larger expenditures than what we normally do. But it was equipment that was needed to get the pool started.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I think we also had some chemicals that are also quite expensive. Madam Mayor, members of the council, last week, members of the council, we had some questions regarding some of the fixed assets. One of the questions, Madam Mayor, members of the council, May, was there was some laptop computers that were purchased, and I went back and we looked, there was actually 35 of the laptop computers, and they were purchased for the vehicles for the police department. And there was 35 of them, and I believe it was close to $35,000, $36,000. I wanted to clear that up. There was also another question on the unidentified vehicle, and that turned out as solid waste, and that turned out to be a trailer for the solid waste department as well. And I'm still reviewing the DFA report on the vehicles, and I'll have a more clear answer for you, Councilor Libbey. And with that, I'll entertain any other further questions.
I have a question. On the laptops for the $35,000 with the PD, what was the depreciation value?
I think, believe they were fully depreciated. I'm sorry, they're not fully depreciated. They were purchased in 2013. The accumulated depreciation is $521. The current depreciation is at $202 annually, and so the net value right now is about $286.
At what rate are we using for depreciation?
We're using the straight line for over a five-year period.
Got you. Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Anything?
Okay, let's continue. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Mayor, if I could just please make a comment, Mayor and members of the council. Each department is working very hard. They're staying within their budgets, and their spending has decreased. And I just want to let you know how good of a job they're doing.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I'm going to take the consent agenda.
All right, the consent agenda.
What is the plan, Council?
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Casey.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented, items 1 through 10, and the table read into the record proper by the city clerk.
Thank you. Certainly. Consent agenda, item one, approval of resolution 1737, City of Las Vegas Meadow City Express, intent to apply for a New Mexico Give-T Grant 5311. Consent to item two, approval of certification of fixed assets inventory for fiscal year 2017, as per section 12-6-1, NMSA 1978, through 12-6-14, NMSA 1978, Article 6 Audit Act. Consent item three, approval of resolution 1739 in support of the biannual memorandum of understanding. Consent item four, approval to award request for proposals 2018-01 for engineering services for the water treatment plant to Moles &amp; Corbin Associates and Bohannon Houston, in entering to agreements. Consent item five, approval to award request for bid number 2018-07 for the City of Las Vegas FEMA flood repair project to new image construction. Consent item six, approval to award request for proposals number 2018-08 for engineering services for raw water transmission lines to WH Pacific and Moles &amp; Corbin, and enter into agreements. Consent item seven, award request for proposals 2018-09 for engineering services for Taylor Wellfield Planning, Design, and Construction to Moles &amp; Corbin and Associates, and enter into agreement. Consent item number eight, approval to award request for proposals number 2018-11 for engineering services for leak detection, planning, design, and construction to Moles &amp; Corbin and Associates and OCAM engineers, and enter into agreements. Consent to item number nine, approval to award request for proposals number 2018-12 for engineering services for effluent system planning, design, and construction to Moles &amp; Corbin and Associates, and enter into agreement. And item number 10...
And item number ten, approval to award bid number twenty eighteen dash thirteen to acquire snow removal equipment for the City of Las Vegas Municipal Airport to Andy Companies Incorporated.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Local? Councilor Uliwari Jr.?
Yes.
Councilor Merrill?
Yes.
Councilor Casey?
Yes.
Councilor Howell?
Yes.
I have a motion by Councilor Casey, a second by Councilor Howell. Thanks to Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next item is our business items. Approval or disapproval of resolution seventeen dash thirty-eight Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan.
Mr. Chalito, how are you?
Robert Chalito will present.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Okay. Item number one on business items is, the Department of Finance Administration requires that municipalities prepare and submit an ICIP in order to plan a systematic allocation of funds and to enable the executive branch of government to submit an ICIP to the legislative branch of government for potential approval and distribution of funds. You have before you a resolution that's pending approval or disapproval for the resolution seventeen thirty-eight Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan. Now, the items, there has been minimal changes to the existing ICIP this year. It was given to me about a month ago to prepare it for submission to the Department of Finance and Administration. There was minimal changes to that ICIP plan. Couple of items that, that were done on that plan was item zero three five, desalination of Bratner groundwater was removed, because that project, my understanding, was completed. Item zero six four, Bratner Dam expansion was also removed, because my understanding was completed. Item zero five two, Riverwalk improvements was also completed. And zero six three, King Street construction was also completed. Any new changes that happened were, project three thirty-three, six seven, Public Facilities Upgrade Improvement was moved into item, into a top-ten item, item number five, simply because of, based on the recommendations that WH Pacific provided to the Public Utilities, I mean, Public Works Department, so that it stands a better chance of being funded, being that there are issues with the roof in that facility. I did work with DFA on getting this updated, so it can be submitted to the Department of Finance Administration. Thank you. All staff, questions?
Questions, comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Robert, I don't have really a question, but this page here, I can barely see it. I don't know if you have...
I do have a, yeah, darker copy.
Yes. Better than that. Because you can't see that one. Yeah. So this, listing here is, is the top five that we, top ten, but you said that. One item went to number five.
Yes.
Okay.
That would be the Public Facilities Upgrade Improvements. And I believe that's the building in the back that has the roof issues.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, the projects that were removed, can you repeat those again? I have the desalination, the Riverwalk, and I didn't get the other three.
King Street, the groundwater removal, the groundwater.
Yes. Madam Mayor, Councilor Casey, zero three five, desalinization of Bratner groundwater, project zero six four, Bratner Dam expansion, zero five two, Riverwalk improvements, and zero six three, King Street construction.
Thank you. I have more questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. They were not just removed, but it went lower, correct?
They were resolved, they were addressed.
Yeah, they were completed.
They were completed.
They were completed.
Okay, so it's off this list. Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. I know that we are being looked at for the pilot project of Avista, and I did raise my concerns to the city manager about the project. I think they're in a transitional phase at this point in time with regards to how they're going to use this. But at one of the last meetings that I attended in Santa Fe, they were still working on the system, they're tweaking it. So what my recommendation to the city manager is that we not jump into it immediately. And the reason I'm saying this is because when we were at DFA, one of the issues we had is that we got rid of the Oracle program, and they were moving into a new program. We had so many problems with the new program, and we had to go back to the Oracle program and input a lot of data. So unfortunately, that might mean that we might have to input data twice, but at least we are safeguarding the data that we have in both programs for in case Avista project does not work as it should.
Yes.
There's a lot of problems in the right now. Okay? Just so you, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Okay. What is the pleasure of the council?
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Howell?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan.
Okay, thank you. Local?
Could we add the dates of that plan that is presented?
Unamended. Unamended date? Is that what you're asking for?
No, I'm asking that in his motion, he tells us what plan this is. It's for 2019 to 2023.
Right.
Just so that it's included in the motion.
Okay. Yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay, local.
Councilor Merrill?
Yes.
Councilor Howell?
Yes.
Councilor Casey?
Yes.
Councilor Uliwari Jr.?
Yes.
I have a motion by Councilor Howell, a second by Councilor Uliwari Jr. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Madam Mayor, I'd like to thank the council and yourself and Richard for, I apologize for not being here last week. I did have a...
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next one, number two in the business, approval or disapproval of WH Pacific, Inc., task order for Mills Utility Building Phase One.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors, Mr. Manager. At the last council session, I was asked to do a little research on a little bit of the history of how we got to this point with this Mills project. Previously, the city had requested quotes from three different contractors or three different engineers, architectural personnel, and we were moving forward with some architectural designs. The project was starting and stopping because we weren't quite sure if the city was going to get the building, it wasn't going to get the building, utilities was going to move in, utilities wasn't going to move in. So we moved back and forth several times. And there was a purchase order that was written for eighteen thousand dollars in services. The city stocked that, and there was only three thousand dollars paid to the architectural engineer. And that was originally for designs, architectural draft designs for modification of the lobby area only. So it was a very simplified scope, it was a very basic scope. The city went back in, utilities went back in, and we started addressing with some professionals some other potential areas of concern. That's when HVAC system was brought to our attention, the security, cameras, access to the doors, several other parts of a construction project were brought to our attention, and so the scope was modified. So now the scope is much more detailed. It does involve a lot more areas of improvements to, believe the building is over twenty years old, to, to an aging building. So there's, we did not complete the original design, so we did not put eighteen thousand dollars into this building before. We are moving forward, requesting to move forward with a much more detailed project for improving of that building and making it safe and healthy for customers as well as staff members.
Okay, questions, comments? Okay, what is the pleasure of the council?
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Casey.
I move that we approve WH Pacific Incorporated to have their task order for the Mills Utility Building Phase One.
Second.
Local?
Councilor Merrill?
Yes.
Councilor Uliwari Jr.?
Yes.
Councilor Casey?
Yes.
Councilor Howell?
Yes.
I have a motion by Councilor Casey, a second by Councilor Howell. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Counselors' reports, Councilor O'Meara.
I've got one, one that I've been asked before a lot of times, but there's a lot of streetlights on the north, the south, South Pacific, New Mexico Avenue, and they're still not being fixed. Is there a reason why?
Mr. Trujillo?
Yeah, I'd have to refer that question to Veronica.
Would you please come up, Mr. Gentry?
Thank you. Councilor O'Meara, I'd like to address to you that we are currently working on a PNM savings energy program, where they are, will be coming in next week. Contracts have all been signed. South Grand, North Grand, and university exits will be, lighting will be, they'll be putting out LED lighting.
How about South Pacific and New Mexico Avenue?
Our second phase of this, this second phase of the PNM savings is going to be bridge street along, along the plaza. Third phase will be around the city of Las Vegas. We want to take one step at a time. So contracts were signed today, so progress will start next week on the off-ramps.
Thank you.
So what we're going to do with the lights that are current now, they will be utilizing those lights to possibly put in around the city lights, just to hold up until we get into that phase.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Did she answer your questions?
Yeah.
Thank you. Several months ago, I requested street signs on Tilden and Grand, Seventh Street and Eighth Street for jake break use by semi-vehicles, and also those vehicles traveling quite often on that residential area. And the chief did contact the Department of Transportation, and they did send copies of the possible signage that can be used. And I don't know what the next step is. I don't know if those go to the city manager to determine which signs, or if they go to you, or what happens. But people are still calling me, saying, how come those signs aren't up, and we called you back in March? And so I would like to know what the status is of those.
We do have signs currently posted up right in front of Seventh Street and Sonics. As you're coming in from the north, south, north end town, south end of town, there is an entrance, and also a sign there on the weight limit. J brakes, that is an ordinance, noise ordinance, and we don't handle that, the noise ordinance. But there is signs, Councilor Casey, posted up on both ends of the, of the street.
Okay.
Going back in research, it's based more on law enforcement, enforcing, enforcing tickets down Seventh Street.
Thank you. My next question or comment is, a reported huge potholes on Fourth Street in Washington, and the residents called to say thank you, because they saw workers looking on them the day after I called. And so I want to thank you for that. I appreciate it, and I explained that some of those potholes are caused by water leaks, and that those will be addressed. And Maria was very good about, you know, being willing to talk to constituents and all about that. This is for a code enforcement issue. I do have residents who are elderly who have called me who live on Fourth Street, close to the Washington Avenue intersection, and behind their homes in the alley on Fourth Street, adjoining the Washington Street, there are skunks living in mattresses that have been just dumped in the alley. They're afraid that the skunks, they have rabies, and they're very concerned about that. They're all elderly women that live in that particular area of the street. And they said, we can't do anything about them, we don't even want to go outside to get our trash cans, because we're afraid of the skunks.
So it's on Fourth Street?
It's on Fourth, the alley behind Fourth Street, close to Washington Avenue.
Councilor, I'd like to interject there. We did get a call, a call on that, and we did call solid waste to go up and pick up the mattresses on that area.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you so much.
And also to let you know, pothole patching is done on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and a list is submitted to our city manager also. If any additional streets need to be addressed, please do not hesitate to make contact with either myself and my department, or go through our city manager.
And a copy of those areas that are going to be patched is in your mailbox.
Great. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Howell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Halloween is coming around the corner here. And speaking of streetlights, especially on Coronado and Eighth Street, there's a lot of lights out there that are out. And a lot of the neighborhoods, especially in the dark areas where their lights are out, the kids are going to be in danger there. So I know there's a lot of, fire department and police department are going to be in the areas where a lot of kids congregate, which is good, but still, if it's dark, there's still a little danger there. So we really need to take a look at which areas are out, the lights are out, especially before Halloween comes around.
So let me explain that process also, too. When we do get a call in stating that our street light is down, the process is that we do make contact with PNM, and we call it a streetlight maintenance. What we do is go out and red-tag the call ourselves. We do make an email contact with PNM, and their turnaround time is usually from three to four days, and they're really good about this. It depends, and also we need to understand, a lot of the calls that we do get in is their personal poles that they pay a monthly on it. The City of Las Vegas does not maintain those poles. So that's what we're trying to also get across.
Yeah, please let them know about Coronado and Eighth, especially, because I've been getting calls from that, from that area.
And the lighting to speak, it's all be changed to LED lighting. It'll approximately save the City of Las Vegas ten thousand dollars a year.
Mr. Abadaka had talked to me today, and he told me there's about thirty skunks that needs to, he counted them, they were going back and forth. He says that it's very important that we do something about it. And I remember us talking, Mr. Trujillo, that, about the skunk problem, and if we can get that contract with that USDA Wildlife Refuge, I believe it is, and really, because not just Mr. Abadaka, but many other community members have been calling me, especially also around Collins Drive, and that area. So there's a lot of skunks there. And if they have rabies, boy, that's going to be, we don't know that. It's very important, we can do something about that. Madam Mayor, I've been receiving calls on, on the museum board. Do you appoint museum board?
Yeah. We got recommendations for including yourself in the museum.
Okay. Because, are they having quorums?
Who's in charge of that panel?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll have Richard check into it.
Okay.
Is that museum?
Yeah.
Museum board.
Okay.
And one more thing, Madam Mayor, I want to thank you for working with Mr. and Mrs. Pearson in regards to the... Pearson in regards to the refugee resolution. I understand that they spoke with you, and you've been working with them, you need to confer with...
Yes, I already given Corina the resolution, she's looking at it.
And we're hoping that it would, it would come on the agenda.
Hopefully next month, November.
Yes.
That's my, let's see.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Right now, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
What's ready?
Street lighting between North Gonzalez and Main Street. Mills having, they've been, I've got some complaints on it, the lighting's real light between North Gonzalez and Main Street.
Oh, on Mills?
Yeah. And if it's DOT, then it's, the DOT's got to take care of the city.
Let's go look at it.
The lighting's pretty, some of those lights are pretty big, so.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you very much. I think that it would be only appropriate that I give this to Ms. Gentry, so you can find a pole, and if you can put it up for the City of Las Vegas, we appreciate it. Thank you very much, but you can get at least.
Please, buddy.
Okay, do we have need for executive session? We're having some Halloween events. Mr. Trujillo, could you, the city is, would you apprise the city unless you want to turn this over to Ms. Garcia, who's just started today, so I'm not certain how caught up she is, so.
Yeah, I'll go ahead.
Help her out for at least a week or a month.
Yeah, so, so Halloween, we're going to be doing a, a big event at the Plaza Park from 2:00 to 5:00. We're also going to close off the, the streets so that the kids could run back and forth. We will have some games for them to play, pumpkin carving contest sponsored by JC's. So we're going to do a lot, a lot of organizations and schools are helping out with that event. So I think it's going to be a big event for, for the children. And that's on the 31st.
And look on the Facebook post, I want to thank Virginia Maro also, I don't know if she's here, for all the work that she's doing on that. And of course, welcome, Ms. Garcia. I know you have a lot of work ahead of you, so I know, I have a lot of faith in you. Congratulations again. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I am going to call the, look to the council for a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor.
Council Casey.
I move that we adjourn.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We'll call.
Council Howell?
Yes.
Council Casey?
Yes.
Council Merrill?
Yes.
Council Uliwari Jr.?
Yes.
Have a motion by Council Casey, a second by Council Uliwari Jr. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion carries.
Thank you all. Do you get everything in time to get back to certification? Okay. Don't go away, you're seeing what David, you have to sign it.
What is this one?
She has to get it.